Well, if I could just start by reading the board policy that relates to having Mikey here, and this is our overarching results. Nacusa School District develops students who excel academically, act responsibly, display good character and citizenship, and reason and solve problems rationally. We focus on preparing our students with the skills they will need in today's global community.
And with that, I'd like to introduce. Do you want to?
Yeah, I can do that, I guess. Our overarching results this month comes from Humky. And what we're looking to do is share information regarding our social emotional teamwork that we've been working on. With that being said, I'm going to introduce again and thank Mikey for coming out and speaking to that work tonight, and I also want to acknowledge that Brian Grill is our social emotional action team leader for our building. So just as a reminder of its structure, we have some action teams, and one of those action teams that has, we'll call it a vertical team, where we have members on it from various grades, is our social emotional team. So all staff members are asked to be on an action team. One of those teams is action team, another one of those teams is literacy team, which we heard from Jackie in the path, and we have a math team too, and early childhood. So tonight, we're just going to hear from myself, Brian's going to chime in when he feels need to, and then Mikey also. And again, we're just going to highlight work related to the social emotional team. About a year ago at this time, we started to look down and said, "We want to do this." And this was to make sure that we did this work around ensuring that our universal was secure with our staff. And we worked on, and I highlighted this, I'm not going to go into a lot of depth because some of it might be a repeat, so I might skip through some things, but feel free to ask questions for clarity. But one of the things that we did is we identified that we want to make sure, again, that this universal practices are secure within our building, and that make sure that there were common expectations related to the common areas. And that includes like hallways, bathrooms, playgrounds, lunchroom. Then we also created, doubled down on what we call grade level expectations, which, okay, this is what it looks like, and to make sure all those teachers are very consistent. So we focused on that, and this year, we kicked it off, and all of those things run through the guiding belief of CARES. CARES is just an acronym that stands for Cooperation, Assertion, Responsibility, Empathy, and Self-Control. And so what we try to do is focus on our social emotional development on those five virtues. So with that, we've done a lot of work. We've created a system which there's common expectations, but then we all create a system in which there's acknowledgements. And with those systems of acknowledgements, that's where the adult is working on language practices to acknowledge students where they're at. But then also, our goal, our big goal is to have all students view and demonstrate CARES. That's the thing that we're working at Humky to get kids to be able to, know, understand and be able to do. So what we want kids to do is basically to share and acknowledge each other using those same virtues. So that's the adult part, and what we're working on that right now is practices to help kids acquire those skills. So we've been working on that, and I went through some of that OE12 data. So that's been our big push this year. Now, we've been shifting in a new direction, and it has to do with really establishing some intervention, and I'm going to ask Brian in a moment to talk a little bit about where we're going and just kind of future steps. But then also talking, having Mikey talk a little about helping kids, what she's doing in her role to support kids when they're struggling with that universal piece. Again, we're asking all adults to be able to do this, but inevitably, there are kids who struggle in that situation, and this is work that we're looking to just build on moving forward. So with that being said, Mikey, would you mind talking a little bit about some of the things you do to support kids when they struggle with, we'll just say CARES?
So when kids have lagging skills, which is really what it is, whether, you know, when we base it on the CARES, the Cooperation, Assertion, Responsibility, Empathy, and Self-Control. When a child is struggling, some of the things that I do will either sometimes just go into a classroom and work with a student. If it's out on the playground, I'm out there just working right with students, and we just practice. So we'll go, like, if I take a student on a break, I have that CARES acronym, I have the focus word that we're doing, and then we just do like affirmations, plus also really going over what is that care, what does it mean, what does it look like? So we practice that before we even go in and take our break, whether it's a five or 10 minute. Some of their breaks are, you know, will be just focusing on a skill, some kids are just down there to get some exercise so they can get back to learning. But before we even take any breaks, we're focusing in on whatever our focused care is, and then just, what does it look like? I ask children to, once we go through that, now you tell me, you know, what does that look like, what do you know about that care? So that's just part of some of the things we do on breaks. I would just, I'm just usually taking individual students and just breaking that down, whether it's in their classroom, outside, or whether I'm taking them on breaks. And we just really focus in on that. I use stories, I use, you know, we play, and we practice those skills with each other. So it's just really a lot of individual or small group is what I'm doing when I'm taking and just reinforcing that CARES.
And I'll add to that, one of the things she does is she provides that just-in-time intervention, so, "Ooh, you're having problems with that, well, let's..." She is very adaptable in making sure that kids get what they need. And one of the things is like, okay, this is what it looks like in the playground, here's what we're doing, and inevitably, in the moment, there, as Mikey referenced, there's kids who have some lagging skills and they struggle with that. So she's there on the playground and just assisting students who might be in a position who struggle with that skill. Anything that you want to add to that, Mikey?
No, I would just say that's the perfect explanation, is just being there, whether it's in the classroom, outside, or whether it's a play where they have like planned breaks and we go away from the classroom and practice skills. So wherever that child is, whatever that child needs, we are just practicing those right just in time or in the moment, a lot of times.
Sure. Are the children that do the planned breaks, is that in response to a behavior or a demonstrated pattern?
The kids that have those planned breaks, it just depends, because it can be an IEP student, so a special education student, who has a certain need where they just need some sensory input, or they need to move, you know, just so that they can be better learners. Sometimes it is in response to behavior, and it just is like, just something that helps them then become better learners. And most students who have those planned breaks will only use them as long as they need them. And honestly, I will tell you, most students then phase them out as they do not need them. So it's really cool to see that. I just had a student who I've had since kindergarten phase out his breaks, he's in second grade, he just did not need them anymore. So I think that's the coolest part is where you'll have some people think that this is a reward to a student, it really isn't. If a student doesn't need it, they don't come. And I do make it available, actually, to all students, and I do try to bring students who request it. At a non-academic time, I do try to take them on breaks too. But I think the coolest part is the student uses that planned break only as long as they need it. So I think that's really neat, to see them learn and not need it.
That is exciting.
So, you know, you kind of answered my question, but maybe not quite completely. Is there any certain grade level that you work with the most, and like you say, they phase out of it? So is it the younger ones that you work with more because they're just getting started and they just don't know, quite know how to deal with this whole new thing of being in school?
And that is the idea. So yes, really, I do work with more of the younger students, I will work with any student that needs that. But as we get this more and more in place, I just foresee it being more those very, you know, four and five K needing it more. But while it's still phasing in, we still see some more, you know, need in first.
I just hear this.
Yeah.
You know, as if the, you know, third graders are less than...
And that's typically what we see through data in terms of what we call playground incidences, and those are the ones that Mikey's really zooming in on and helping those individuals develop. And so, Mike, if there's anything else, jump in.
I want to thank you for that time we spent a couple weeks ago during our four K was coming in, and that was fun too.
Well, thank you for being there, that is, and that's just another fun aspect of right in the moment, where wherever you are with students, it's an opportunity to learn and teach, so I love that.
Thank you, that was a good experience for me, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. And I was going to flip it over to Brian, and Brian just kind of...
I really wanted to thank Mikey, on top of her work with kids on an individual basis, last week I stopped over on the professional development day, and she was working with, she's kind of that lead learner around this whole behavior and really helping kids be more responsibly independent, and she was working with a group of other support staff that went over a video, and I don't know if you want to just touch on it, I don't really know what you were doing, but it was a good conversation.
Well, as John was talking about, one of our big universals is language. So teacher language and also building student language, because one thing, once we get our language universal and the students start picking up on that, we notice that students are teaching each other with that same language. So we were working on a lot of what that teacher language is and the conscious language, and like using love language versus language of fear or unconscious language. So that was what we were focused on, and then just building better brains, because it's easier right now to build these students' brains than to try to fix them later. So that was our focus.
So thank you for taking that role, Joe, that's great.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And then just the other part of, that's a little bit about what we've done, what we're doing, and where we're going right now. Brian, you want to highlight some of the things that we're looking to do?
Yep. So one of the things as part of that universal, you know, teachers when going into education, they get instruction, well, how do I teach reading, how do I teach math, how do I do some of these things? And we have some veteran teachers teaching the social skills and things like that, that's a new area for them. They're like, how do I teach these things? So we heard that from a lot of teachers, so we wanted to give them some resources. So this is a program called Everyday Speech, to give them some of those resources to start thinking about, and Ms. Shoker was very kind to let me use her login, because we have a few. But one thing you can see, like, she can see most, her most recently viewed things on here. So you can see, she's looking for videos on how to teach kids how to apologize, or how to seek out friends. So this program, what it is, now, I'm going to show you something, so I'm giving you a very brief, quick overview, so ask questions. If I were to go full curriculum here, it goes through, here are different areas of emotional regulation, behavior, play skills, all this. So all these areas, there are videos, activities, SMARTboard things, paper activities, games that teachers can use to teach kids these skills. But to make it a little less overwhelming, what we said to teachers, we showed them, if you click this search button and you say, "I want to, I have kids lagging in conflict resolution," all they have to do is type in conflict resolution. And then all of a sudden, so if you look at all materials here, but then what you start seeing, here are all the videos, and this actually provides videos for middle school age, high school age, elementary, you have videos, you have activities, you have games. And you are now, all of a sudden, for teachers that are like, "I don't really know how to teach this, I don't know what it looks like," you now have a bank to just start pulling, so you can just type the skill and say, "This is what I'm looking to teach, I'm noticing my kids are struggling with this." You have resources to start teaching. But moving towards the future, now, if you have a student with repeated behaviors, that you're seeing a pattern that's happening multiple times, we're starting to, this semester, we just went over it Friday with staff, we're going to start going into this where we're looking for that pattern, when we notice that pattern, now we're going to be having with Rod a skills group, where they're meeting with him one to two times a week, where they're taking videos specific to this, and then communicating back to the teacher, here's what we're trying to replace that behavior with, we're teaching him to do this instead. And now we're going to practice for a six-week period where they're meeting with Rod, we're communicating with their teachers, here's what we're trying to do, and collecting data to see, is that behavior changing over a six-week period? And then reevaluating, saying, "Yep, it's working, no, it's not, what do we do next?" But that way, we're having some purposeful planning to say, "We noticed there's a behavior at this time, here's the pattern, now what are we going to do about it?" So...
So you're being proactive, kind of reactive, because you're waiting until you see the pattern, but you're not letting the pattern get out of control?
Correct. And part of with that proactive side too, that's why Ms. Mikey's there too, to say, "Hey, you want to know what, we're making sure we're giving all kids instruction in these areas." Because you think about it too, if you're intervening for a behavior, you want to make sure that behavior was taught before you intervene. So that's where we're giving teachers resources to say, "You have ways of teaching this emotional regulation or self-advocacy skills, what have you." And then when they're noticing we're, with what instruction we've given them, they're still struggling. So now we're going to give them additional instruction, practice, and strategies.
Thank you.
But good question, yeah, we're being somewhat reactive, but remaining on that proactive side.
Right, you're not waiting for a meltdown or, you know, an incident to happen, you're looking for tendencies.
Correct, yep. And two, if that tendency, say they have it four times a month, and we're saying, "Yep, you need social skills group," but two, there's a meeting process in there too, because what if that pattern behavior's occurring because there's a change at home? Or, "Hey, I'm just upset because we have a teacher right now, my teacher's on maternity leave, and I'm not used to this new teacher yet." How do we support you in that and figure out, is it skills group that you need, or do we need to just, you know, maybe it's a check-in with Mr. Winters because something happened outside of school that you need help processing? But that, we have some criteria to trigger, hey, we're going to meet to figure some things out and make a plan.
Thank you, are there any other questions?
Really, thank you very much for bringing that topic, and Mikey, thank you for your time here.
Thanks for coming in, Mikey.
You're welcome. Good night, everyone.
You too.
Good night, Mikey.
Well, I can get right back. All right, have a good night.
Oh, I do need my coat.
She'd have figured it out when she...
I would have figured it out because like he's...
Next, we have Ms. Eleanor Leary here, I personally like to thank you for your emceeing the advisory group a few Fridays ago. Was it that one already?
I guess it was.
I think it was, yeah.
It seems like yesterday, but thank you. It sounded like there was a lot of discussion that came out of that.
Yes, there was a lot of discussion that came on.
Isn't that something?
Yeah.
But I won't steal any of your thunder, this is your time.
Well, but it is important to know, Eleanor, that we are going to have a couple of board members come up and be a part of the lunch hour and just answer questions.
Grab and go.
Oh, the grab and go.
Grab and go. At night, Thursday and Friday, I'm going to be there. And Brian will be there on Thursday with me.
And I'll be there Wednesday for a couple hours, just to hang around if people have questions, you know? But, you know, if there are questions, and just, Mr. Johnson, you know...
And I did work with Deanna, she's going to announce that.
Very good, very good. And there was some, there's been some good, I mean, good discussions I have heard of all, and I guess, what would your thoughts about how that day went?
I thought it went well. It was good to have the board members at school, so like, because sometimes I think that the kids at school are like, "Oh, they do things for school, but they're not here." And so it was good to have you guys there and just present, and I think that was really good. I think some people took it out of, a little bit out of context, but...
I was too mean, wasn't I? No? Said, "We're going to cut services."
No, I think they heard the things that they wanted to hear and not necessarily that were true. So that, yeah, there's going to be some work that is needed to fix that, but I think some people are trying, like, sort of turning around, turning a corner on that. So, yeah, but it was, it was good to have you all there. Thank you, Miss Knight, for explaining it so well.
Don't thank me.
Yeah, I like the way you explain that in words that they could understand. I could understand for the first time.
That was an education.
Get me back to my car buying days.
No, anyway, what do you have?
All right, so Julie for Charity was Saturday, and that was really good. I think they made almost $2,000 in profits, which that is going to Children's Miracle Network. And then Student Council is planning a dodgeball tournament, which is going to be March 7. And so if anyone wants to make a team, you can definitely do that, it's for adult teams, high school teams, and middle school teams, there's some prizes. And then we're just beginning Spirit Week before spring break, which we usually do every year, so, yeah.
And that dodgeball is going to be located at one...
At the high school.
At the high school.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Eleanor. And like we, you know, that ability to talk during advisory, you know, we had a good topic, but I, you know, I as a board member enjoyed that very much too, just being in front of the students. So please, maybe on a quarterly basis, Mr. Johnson, if you could maybe do that, with getting some board members together.
Just work with students also, yeah, that's what I would prefer to see.
Yeah.
If it's quarterly, we can make that work.
If it's not an undue hardship, and if they want to hear us, though, if they don't, that's understandable, because they could get tired of it really quick. Thank you for your work on that. I could tell that everybody had a lot of respect for you when you were up on stage, so kudos to you. Next on the list, we have Mr. Brian Grill. Anything that you have for us today?
Nope.
Ms. Knight, do you want to wait until you're...
Sure, no.
You're on, you're on.
Okay.
You're on, it's your time.
So our second Friday count was the second Friday in January. And just a reminder that we have two counts that we are required to do, third Friday in September and second Friday in January. The third Friday in September is used for the state aid and the revenue of the worksheet, and the second Friday is basically used for the state aid formula. So we do it in sessions, or we do it in pieces. So we have enrollment, which basically means kids in seats, and it's used for staffing. Membership, which converts it to an FTE basically for DPI, and then DPI likes to us to report FTEs, which is what we get funded on. So I have a few slides, and you have a lot more detail in your packet. So I looked at the past four counts, so that means September 2018, January 2019, which is last year's counts, and then this year's count is September and January 1920. So we have brick and mortar, kids in seats. If we just look at January to January, last January, we had 1,001.05, and this January, we have 1,070. So those are just kids in seats, and in your packet, I broke it out by school too, so you can see the schools. We also have virtual kids in seats. This is head count, because they're not in seats, they're probably in seats at their house, but this is head count. So we look at last year's virtual, January 2019, 109, and we have this year's at 149, of course, that's with the cap at Wise Academy. So we look at our transfer ins, these are non-resident students that are coming into our district to learn. Last year, January count, we had 100 coming in, this year we have 115, so that's increasing. And then last, for virtual, continues to increase, and this is mainly Wise, I mean, we have a lot of Wise students that are coming in. January 2019 is 78, and this year, January, was 122. So then we also have kids going out. So this is just the district total, and I broke it out by school or by grade in your packet. Last year, we had 117 students transferring out, these are residents that are in our district that chose to go to another district. This year, we have 140 students transferring out. We're looking at FTEs then, this is what we actually, actually report to DPI and what we get funded on. Last year, January was 1,0123, and then this year is 1,094. So overall, if you look at the blue and the gray, those are the January counts, the orange and the yellow are the September counts. And it just kind of goes from head count to transfer ins, to transfer outs, and the FTEs. So this is basically the overall summary of the column. And every fourth year, we're selected for a membership audit, although we do have a chance to get selected every year based on DPI's WIM. So we were selected this year, this is year number two, we were selected two years ago. So we were selected this year, so I'm in the process of working with the auditors for our membership audit as well. And what they do is they basically look at my numbers and verify everything that I've reported, that I've reported correctly according to our student information system, so...
A lot of information, and I appreciate the breakdown by schools of mine. And I, you know, I see, you know, we've had a tough time, but really a 3% decline, I mean, you look at that big number across the board, and I just really liked the transfer in versus transfer out, we're still losing kids, we don't like to see kids go, but we have that more in than more out, and that's so important. It's a measure that we as a district, we were on the other side of that for how many years? I believe this is maybe the third or fourth year in a row.
Fourth year, yeah.
Fourth year, and out of nine years, so the first five years, we had more out, I'm my...
No, that's only two years.
Yeah, and those are four counts.
So the first seven years, we had more going out than coming in. So last year is very positive, so thank everybody for your work.
Yeah, we can use this information for staffing and look and see how we're being funded.
And, you know, a lot of work goes into keeping these numbers up and the tracking, thank you, Lynn, for that, too. So we got that. That's it, I like that, thank you very much. Mr. Johnson?
I have a bunch of stuff. So, it is that time of year, we're looking at the Academic Excellence Scholarship. The Academic Excellence Scholarship is awarded to Wisconsin high school seniors who have the highest grade point average in each, in each public high school, and how many you get depends on enrollment. So what we have is, but then in order to receive a scholarship, a scholarship, a student must be enrolled on a full-time basis by September 30th of the following academic year at a participating university of Wisconsin, Wisconsin Technical College, or independent institution in the state. So that's an important part for what we're going to talk about. The value of the scholarship is $2,250 per year to be applied towards tuition, half of the scholarship is funded by the state, the other half is matched by the institution. And this year, the person put forward is Sawyer Copeland, and he's one of five, but he is the only one of five students who are all right there with GPA, but he is the only one of the five who is attending a UW school, so...
Very good.
So Sawyer Copeland, he'll be attending UW O'Clare, so...
Nice. Well, congratulations, Sawyer.
Yes.
And I'd like, we need to approve this on a case-by-case basis, so I'm looking for a motion. We have first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Next, Technical Excellence Scholarship. So these are awarded by the State of Wisconsin to Wisconsin high school seniors who have the highest demonstrated level of proficiency in technical education. The scholarships are only for use at Wisconsin, within the Wisconsin Technical College system. The value of the scholarship is $2,250 per year to be applied towards tuition for six semesters. And this year, the recommended individual is Dakota Moody, who will be attending Midstate Technical College. And Dakota has been, for just a note, he has been a youth apprentice for the past two years, he's actually the first Nacusa student to be a youth apprentice at Point Precision in Stevens Point, really a neat place, and a wonderful, Point Precision is a wonderful supporter of education, so, just as a note there.
Well, congratulations, Dakota Moody, I'd like to call for a motion for the Technical Excellence Scholarship.
Very excellent. Push that.
Same. First and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
The next one I have is an early college credit program. So we have the Start College Now, which is the Technical College System, when a student at Nacusa High School, or any high school, but Nacusa High School, in our case, is attending a technical college course, that would be the Start College Now program. And then the UW system, it's the Early College Credit Program. We do have a student who has put in an application for the Early College Credit Program, probably, these are all UW College online courses that have been put on this document. It doesn't mean that all of these are going to work in his schedule, it's just simply, I met with his mom, we put these together, and then I'm bringing this forward. A couple of the classes, the English 101... A couple of the classes, uh, the English one oh one, College Writing, Critical Reading in English, one oh two, Critical Writing, Reading and Research. Those two I would recommend not to, um, to approve, and I talked to this mom, who knows this. The ones that I would ask for your approval are on computer, uh, well, Intro to Public Speaking, we don't have a comparable course exactly like that. And then also Intro to Computer Science Basic, Intro to Programming, and then Algebra Language Program Basic are the courses that I would ask for approval for. And then with the caveat that I probably also will be bringing some additional, um, ECCP and Start College Now applications forward at the next, at the March Board Meeting, because our scheduling process just doesn't align real well with getting the March first deadline in. But March first is just for us as a school district. So at this time, I'm looking for approval on this one.
Could you just restate the ones that you're?
They're on the application, yeah, so.
Yeah, I got it, I, we got it, and I think you're good, Diana, you got the notes, we're good.
Yeah.
So as for the, with the conditions that were stated by, by Mr. Johnson, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the Early College Credit Program.
Second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much.
And then, of course, Description Book, any questions or anything there that it's pretty straightforward.
It was pretty straightforward, but I thought it was pretty comprehensive, it had a fresh look to it. I don't know, was there any real efforts or changes, I?
Not that would appear in there.
Yeah, I guess I read through it for the first time, for the whole thing.
Yeah.
No.
Rachel Seaver has been working to bring it down in a number of pages.
And I think I.
So this year she brought it down by about ten, eight, ten pages.
That's good, I, I'm, thank you, I enjoyed reading that, so thank you.
Kid, could you, could you just talk a little bit about where computer science is, 'cause that's been.
Sure, yeah. Um, so, well, part of the referendum certainly would be to hire a tech ed teacher. The tech ed position that would be in the referendum vote would be someone who would be focused in on computer science. It's an area, I mean, we talked about it before, we have a definite need, um, you know, certainly I've heard from parents of current students, parents of former students, former students who have gone on to pursue IT field, well, IT, or not even IT, who have talked to me about just, we need more computer science, certainly if you look at the trends, we need more computer science. And so, that's, yeah, that's where we're sitting.
And just looking at the last motion we worked on, you know, IP and request for a computer science, that's the first thing that went in my brain is, you know, here we are approving an option, of course, essentially, for a course that we should be able to offer within our district, 'cause it's an identified need in our, in our community for this, and our, and.
Career planning.
Career planning. So, yeah, that speaks volumes to, you know, the need in our district for that.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's an area that we're not able to satisfy at this point, in, in the age we live in today, to not be able to offer a computer science course is simply hurtful. So, yes, we need that operational money, which could greatly help with that, so.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, yep. Do you want to interrupt it?
Well, of course I'd.
Just kidding you, Terry.
Go ahead.
Um, thank you very much for that, and again, for the work done on that book, appreciate that. Um, back to you, Mr. Spring.
Here we are again.
Yeah.
AGR, everybody remember what that, remember, talk about it close to your achievement gap reduction. Uh, we as a school district, uh, we see funds through DPI, and in agreement with receiving those funds, we complete forms, uh, reporting mechanism for achievement gap reduction. So in our building, we do, just a reminder, we use those to help, um, with coaching, and that's how that money's used, and Jackie does that. And she is our coach, and that's where those funds go to, so.
And this is, this is the old Sage Fund, this is the new one, which used to be Sage, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Correct.
Yeah.
So, right now, then again, we report out biannually, we do this in the summer, and we do this in the winter at the end of the semester. So right now, this is the form that I had to upload electronically into a port hole on the DPI website. I'm just gonna take a second, hand it to you, and just, and, and really report to you, so I'm just gonna pass it around the table here right now, so.
Means we're included in our practice as well.
They were included, oh, thanks, Diana.
Yeah.
I was thinking I had.
We appreciate it, but no, I, we had the opportunity to re-go over.
Okay. Good, okay, well, then I'll highlight them real quick. Uh, essentially, what happens is we have in our, in our, um, in our building, that's one of our building leaderships team is the, uh, PLC Council. And what they do is they speak for their team, they collaborate around the goals that are listed over on the side in the area of reading and math. We track those, we work towards those goals, and you heard me talk about, a little bit about, um, the work we do around the data tables to monitor kids' growth. These are just the numbers of where we're at right now, and that's all that is, and that's just part of our process of making sure that every student gets what they need. So with that, then I, I.
Then that, we appreciate that information, and it does look like this, compared to the past, this looks like we're doing better in some respects with.
Yeah, you know, and it's, and, and what's really tricky about it is because we say, okay, our goal is to get kids who are, we say, okay, the, the board goes emerging, developing, meeting, exceeding. So the goal is to get these kids who are emerging and developing over onto this side of the board, because we believe by getting over here, they're eventually going to be advanced or proficient when they do the, uh, their grade. Third grade task, when they, if they're in the third grade experience. So that's what we're working towards, so it's hard, you say, percentage-wise, well, it's just whatever group of kids are there. But right now, in terms of just breaking it down, right now, you know, I was encouraged at the work that we have been doing. The third grade was able to say, we have, and I, it doesn't reflect on the goal right now, but I wrote it down just 'cause I, I thought this is good. Um, forty-five out of seventy-two currently of our, of our third grade students, forty-five out of seventy-two are currently meeting or exceeding at this point in math.
Wow.
That was, that's encouraging.
Very good.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, so I'm very optimistic about all the work we're doing.
Thank you, good, good. Okay, um, at this time, we are on to a topic of, uh, selection of art tech, of, sorry, that, uh, architect and engineering services for the athletic facility project, pending referendum pass, passage. Um, it became evident early on after we voted, uh, to, to have that, the resolution to have the referendum, um, referenda on the April seventh ballot, that we needed to, to work in earnest to find a provider. Um, because of the cost of the project, we had to release what I refer to as RFQs. Um, RFQs were released to, and correct me if I'm wrong, in five parties.
Four parties.
Four parties. We had two responses, um, for the RFQ. Uh, there was a great deal of work that went into work, there are two fantastic firms, um, came to us. Rettler, terrifying engineering firm, they've been providing some preliminary work for our school for the last two years. Done excellent work, and then there was another firm, Point of Beginnings, that submitted a, 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 uh, proposal. And again, these are, these are, own, these proposals are dependent upon passing the referendum. But we knew we had limitations on, on monies that we had available through the, through the capital referendum. And it was necessary to really get some numbers and, and see what we could afford for that amount. And there was a lot of work that went into this, we needed to compare apples and apples and oranges to oranges. Terry, Terry met, you know, we were, uh, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, making sure we were comparing the similar data. Um, comparing, uh, you know, apples to apples. And there was some requested, some additional revisions that were requested to make, to ensure that they were equivalent, uh, proposals. And, um, there was an extensive rubric that was completed, and this, this was a very difficult process. Terry, did you wanna pick up after that, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I, actually, you, you pretty much spelled out, I think both firms have, you know, Rettler, we worked with. Actually, Point of Beginning, if the, for those of you that were on the board or paying attention to this. Point of Beginning worked when Jason Becker was working in the district, so we had some experience with them. We then switched over and spent, you know, the last two years working with Rettler. A lot of our, the video work that we did, a lot of the preliminary, um, estimates we got were with Rettler, right? So they've served the district well, and now Point of Beginning, uh, has, has joined, and we've certainly learned about them. And so, both very reputable firms, and we've had really good conversations with both of them. And, um, Point of Beginning, we found, has lots of ties to our community. And, uh, so we see that, you know, according to the rubric, that's a valued aspect of Point of Beginning. So good conversations with both firms, and it, yeah, it's been a, it's been a journey.
And when this referendum is successful, this firm, I think, you know, is a very community-orienteded Point of Beginnings. Um, they're going to work with local contractors, um, they're gonna be somebody that we can enjoy working with. Um, it was a hard decision to tell somebody no, and, you know, we'd like to thank the other firm for applying. Um, they did fantastic work. It's just, you know, looking at, you know, somebody that has that community ownership, and, you know, I, I think we'd have really paid back from our stakeholders, but this, my decision was made. The costing data and, uh, the, uh, the, uh,
Renderings?
Renderings, as well as the.
Proposals?
No, the evaluation.
Oh, the rubric, yeah.
That are included within your package there. I need to note that, you know, the costings of these items, um, what work is done following the passing of the referendum, if, if we, if it works. There's gonna be room in here to move some of these numbers around, and move some of these items around as the board seems, beams fit. The next step in the process is to bring Point of Beginnings to the board, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And have them describe a little bit about their services, and, you know, I wanna thank Lynn, first of all, for giving me some guidance how that works through this process, I've never worked in this before, so I appreciate that. Um, I appreciate the work you do a great deal. Um, and certainly, you know, I think you're gonna be taking the lead from here on, you know, with a lot of the stuff, but, um.
We'll do it together.
Together. But, uh, thank you for, for your help.
Terry did the bulk of the work for the RFQ, I think he really worked hard on that.
Okay. Thank you, Terry.
Yeah, it's been, you've helped a lot over.
He made me work really hard too, though. Terry made.
I'm like, yeah.
Do you have any questions, gentlemen? Um, I wanna thank you all for your support of myself and working with these individuals. Um, I truly tried to bring each one of your, your thoughts and each one of your values to the table on this. Um, preliminary questions or thoughts?
I like the, the fact that they're really contracted to the local community, so I'm happy with that.
Yeah. Well, it's a, I'd like to congratulate Point of Beginnings, and I'd also, we're looking forward to working with Point of Beginnings, and I think they're gonna prove to be an integral partner in this project. We have a lot of work to do before the referendum gets, gets out there. We need to work on informing our public and answering those questions across the board.
Absolutely.
It's time to start doing that, so.
Yeah.
We have informational meetings coming up, um, those are on our website, and we're looking forward to, to answering that. At this time, yes?
Um, you said they have ties to the community, and I think you mentioned to me one, some names, who are the people that were here?
Um, they have, uh, I think the owner's wife is a graduate of Nacusa.
Yeah.
And they also have kids that are currently in our district.
Okay.
Um, not that family, the brother, the brother, the sister's brother, uh, Mr. Olstrom, Jim.
Jim?
Yeah, they have kids that are going to our middle school right now, and he's on firm. Um, they have one of our past graduates on staff as well, um, one of our alumni and a, and a mid-state grad.
So, is this Jim Olstrom? My age?
No.
Nope, you're the guy?
Yeah. Yeah.
Check out their website, all their, their information, and they do a nice job of.
'Cause I know, I know it's Jim Olstrom, the, the, the same guy.
Oh, there it is.
Okay. If it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm gonna look at all of them, of course. Yeah. And again, like I say, those, you know, those items, we can't, you know, it's not all written in stone, it says, this is, uh, estimates and.
Which is important for everybody to remember.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
And there's gonna be a lot of input from coaches and other people, you know, and transparency with everybody. So at this time, I'd like to call for a motion to approve, um, engineering services from Point of Beginnings for the athletic facilities project pending referendum passage.
So.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Quick step forward. OE twelve, discipline, policy governance. We met last week, Thursday, and discussed, uh, OE twelve, discipline. We had report outs, we had a good act of discussion. Um, I'd like to encourage, Terry, do you wanna?
Sure, let me read the policy. So the district administrator shall develop and consistently enforce discipline policies to maintain safe and effective environments for all students. Uh, the district administrator may not permit student unruly behaviors that disrupt learning. The district administrator will, and this is, uh, where we got into some conversations last Thursday. The first one is appropriately involve relevant stakeholders and staff in developing student discipline policy. What is the school discipline policy, and who was included in developing the policy? So each school spent some time last week talking about the work that's been done in this area. And certainly would board members like to comment on that portion of the policy?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll work my way around. Uh, Humke, I really enjoyed John's detailed work, I know I talked to him a little bit last week after a discussion, the CARES program, and the fact that we're down, uh, seven hundred reports between the major and the minor, that that was, was really crucial and awesome. So, good work, uh, for Humke. Uh, AMS, I know, uh, Mr. Black is gone, but to restore practice, I mean, it's, I think that's going really well.
It's working.
Yeah, so, um, and then lastly, NHS, uh, I like the fact that they're creating ownership for the staff. Uh, I think that's key, along with improving instructional time, so I think that's, all those are good positives for our district in regards to discipline.
The whole cell phone. Has really made a difference.
Yeah.
So thanks for your work on that, and Susan?
That's all I got.
Right.
Good job, Cody, thank you.
Any other comments around that involving relevant stakeholders, board members?
You know, I, one of the, I'd just like to make an overall, you know, closing the loop and having that effective communication once, when they're disciplined through the office, and then, you know, feedback through the teachers. I think you mentioned that a little bit, um, but that seemed to really come full circle, and I, I think that, you know, the conversation we had around this topic three years ago was definitely a lot different than we had this last week, Thursday. And even, like, we, we're, we're seeing great things happening, guys, I think. Um, and I think that it's paying dividends, the work that's been done, so I'd like to thank you for your work.
And, and the entire staff.
And the entire staff, each and every teacher, and each and every.
Support staff.
Support staff and office personnel, it takes a whole system to make it work. And the greeters at the door, Pat.
Yes. He's got something to add about that.
No, no, not that, what, what I wanna say is, you know, in my, in my years of going over to the middle school, 'cause that's, you guys know that's where I am there the most. I, I can remember when it was discipline and kids were just hauled into the office, and stuck in a cubicle, and there they sat, and nothing happened, they weren't, weren't. Now it's, it's, you know, with the way they've got, uh, people coming in alongside, like, like Mikey, that, you know, at all the schools, where they grab, you know, grab a hold of that kid and take him for a walk and just talk him. where they grab, you know, grab a hold of that kid and take him for a walk, and just talk him down, and get him ready to go back into the class quicker, you know, and, and, and get them learning again, is, is huge, and I mean, I've just seen that transformation big time over the last few years, when, now in that spot, they've got cookies and stuff like that sitting on its knees, you know.
They took the area back.
They took the area back instead of putting it onto this, under the, you know, under the secretaries and stuff, you know. So, yeah, that, to me, it's just a good process, moving forward, and it's, it's working, I can see it every day.
And so, no non-compliances, we're all good, I'd call for a motion to approve OE twelve discipline.
So.
Second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. GP ten, conflict of interest.
All right, do you want me to read that quick?
Sure.
Board members shall avoid conflicts of interest involving any matter pending before the board. A conflict of interest is deemed to exist when a member is confronted with an issue in which the member or a member of his or her family has a personal or financial interest, or an issue or circumstance that could render the pub, the mem, excuse me, render the member unable to devote complete loyalty and singleness of purpose to the public interest. Board members shall be expected to be familiar with the Wisconsin State Statute nineteen fifty-nine, codes of ethics for local government officials, employees, and candidates.
This was sent out to all board members, there were no non-compliance, compliances found. I would like to commend this board, um, each of you have, at one point, nearly each and every one of you at one point have expressed areas where there might be a conflict of interest, and I would like to thank you for recognizing that. And it takes, it takes somebody that's high, operating at a very high level to do that, so I commend you. No non-compliances, I'd like to call for a motion to approve GP ten, conflict of interest. We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And we're gonna move BSR five E off one more month, I'm gonna move it off until July, no, we'll try to get it next year.
When is that, is it July?
July is when we gotta do it.
You gotta have it done.
Yeah, that's, this, we, the six month follow-up in January, we're gonna push off until March.
We're good.
Thank you, though, Diana, for putting it on there. Consent agenda, um, donations, Cody?
Uh, so donations, thank you for our donors this month, we have five hundred dollars from the Bethlehem Lutheran Church. And this is for the Nacusa Academy Student Activity Account, along with thirteen brand new pairs of shoes for students, which is donated by Michael and Linda Gifford. So thank you to those individuals and the church. And then backpack for kids, twenty-five dollars from R. Karbowski, fifty dollars from Sacred Heart Collections, and fifty-five dollars from Bethlehem Women in Divisions. So thank you to our sponsors and donations this month.
Okay, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda as presented. We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Future agenda, it's March twelfth, we have our board workshop. Our three self-directed thinkers, and GP eleven, board member violations. I would like to possibly, guys, do we need to report out from the state convention? In our workshop? Can we do a report out?
Dave was eager to share.
Did he?
No, not at the workshop, at the workshop in March.
I will not be here at the.
She's gonna be, coming to us via Alaska.
Oh, no.
Canada.
Canada.
That, we, that board workshop, I, I'm gonna be judging speech at the, uh, academic decathlon in Dallas.
Ah, we'll have to get that on there sometime.
Yeah.
Okay, guys, we wanna hear about that. We already talked about the, the reminders, I wanna thank you, Diana, for keeping us on track.
So Diana, do you wanna talk a little bit about what, what do you guys need, so that we can keep this now moving smoothly with communications? The text messages, what would be good, are we getting it on all of your calendars, what's listed here on this?
Email, emails looking from you.
I'm happy with it.
Yeah.
And, you know, we just have, have diligence and, you know, sticking to our design ones, and we do understand that at times things will come up, gentlemen, after a late, things will come up.
Right.
But, you know.
And we'll reach out, let's say Brian can't make it, or somebody can't make it, we'll reach out, see if we can't get more people. Are you also working on that list, remember when we talked about our circles of influence, are you also trying to reach out to those people? And how did it go at church on Sunday?
Really good.
Went well. Awesome, yeah.
Nothing but, you know, there was one lady that was somewhat concerned about the, uh, the athletic.
Okay, good.
But she felt that everybody else was like, yeah, this, the operation was going through, this is all going through.
Good.
And that's all that wrong.
Yeah, good.
So that was huge.
Um, did you have quite a few? Really?
Well, they didn't all stand, talk with me, but.
Good.
It was just a, I mean, cause it wasn't designed for that, but.
Right, good.
We have a lot of work to do, at this time, we have our March meeting, and then, or, you know, that's it, after our March meeting, we'll be having the April seventh vote, so. This is time to do it, okay. Without further ado, I'd like to adjourn into closed session. Consideration of motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five one C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically to discuss the possibility of non-renewal of an employee. Looking for a motion. We have a first and a second, roll call vote, please.
Corey Dugolski.
Uh, yes.
David Chuna.
Yes.
I vote yes. Ryan Mahon. Brian Geezy.
Yes. Okay, I wanna thank everybody again for being here.